Twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four is now in session. Would you stand and join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gary Merrill, president of the board this year, and to my right is vice chair Barb Lewis, and to my left is Jeff Benton, fellow commissioner, and of course our administrator Tracy Davies and our deputy administrator Don Houston, and of course our clerks Brandy and Jennifer. Let's begin.
Resolution number two four dash five six zero in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We do have some public comment today. Commissioner Merrill, you have the sheets in front of you. The first one I had was from Sandra Stoltz, Troy Township.
Yeah, I think we have four according to what information I've been given. I'd just like to remind everybody, limited to three minutes, and if you just introduce yourself when you come up for the record, I appreciate that as well. So Sandra?
Good morning.
Brandy, will you keep time for the benefit of everybody, please? I'm sorry, Jennifer.
That's right.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Sandra Stoltz, Troy Township trustee, and the Board of Trustees has passed a resolution in support of revising the current local government funding formula for Delaware County. We feel that the present formula is very unfair towards townships. So Sandra Stoltz and Ralph Mosley both signed the resolution. The plan was later was absent that day. So that's all I wanted to say.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sandra.
And that brings us to Doug Price. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. Barb, Jeff.
Good morning.
Doug Price, Troy Township trustee. I'm here to ask your support for changing the local government funding formula. You'll be getting some more information. One of my fellow trustees back here from another township has a resolution we passed asking your support. We're not asking for, we're asking for reallocation of the current funding. We're not asking for taking any money away from the county portion, the city portion. We're just asking for redistribution of what is going to the townships and some of the villages to make it fairer to the townships. When it was originally passed in ninety-three, preservation parks was given money every year. They were given like sixty-six thousand dollars when they first started. Preservation Parks now has their own levy. I don't know if you guys know that Preservation Parks now brings in eleven million dollars a year. We're asking that to be reallocated a little bit, you know, sixty-six thousand to them as a drop in the bucket when they're bringing in eleven million dollars, which is more than most of the township budgets. A lot of us could use a little more money. We're not talking big money, but every bit helps. Like for our township, it's eleven, twelve thousand dollars more, but could go to the roads. I don't know. Did you know, like with ODOT's new plan for twenty-three, what they want to do, cutting off access to twenty-three, it's going to put a lot more traffic on our roads that we could use every bit of money to help keep our roads up, that we need more money for upkeep of our roads, that ODOT's going to push more traffic onto our roads. We're just asking you to look at the funding formula that we came up with to redistribute the money that is more fair for the townships and villages, especially the small villages like Ostrander, Ashley, and everybody else. So that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. And that brings us to Renee Vaughn.
Good morning, commissioners. Renee Vaughn from Genoa Township, and I am speaking in my official capacity today. The Genoa Township trustees met on Thursday and passed a resolution to support revising our local government fund at the county level. And I'm just going to echo some of what Doug said. The formula that we currently used is outdated. We just ask that you look at the current formula and revise it so that it is population-based. Funding should be based on population. And I do have a resolution that we passed. It's, I don't know that it's the same one that Troy Township passed. We revised ours a little bit, but I'll just leave this for the record. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Renee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. And that brings us to Megan Rill.
Good morning.
Good morning. Am I good?
You're good.
Thank you. Respected commissioners, I appreciate your time this morning, and just want to echo what some of my colleagues here from other townships have said. Since nineteen ninety-three, the funding formula for local governments has remained the same. And of course, as you know, we've had rapid growth and development, particularly within townships and cities and villages as well across this county. What we are asking for is a per capita fair funding formula to make right and right-size the funding for today's reality amongst the population in the county. Yes, that does include looking at preservation parks, and yes, that does include looking at the cities. But one thing, and I want to just provide a quick review in that we've met with the city of Delaware, we've met with other townships, we've met with other villages. This formula has evolved over the last seven months to really reflect what we think is truly fair and right for the county today. And for example, if we did go by a per capita basis, the city of Delaware would not only be made whole eventually, they would receive more funding than they currently do today in the future based on the anticipated growth population. So it's not only in the favor of the townships, it's also in the favor of the city of Delaware to support a per capita basis because in the long term, given their growth projections, they will also be made whole too. And so as you look at this fair funding formula, please know that there's been a lot of time, effort, and collaboration on this to ensure that we're building towards the right future for the county, not just for the present-day situation. Appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
I appreciate all of you coming today. This is being evaluated. We will have a representation. I believe this meeting is next week. There's a meeting, and we will be represented at that meeting. Really, other than that, at this point, I don't believe we have any other comment. Just we're digesting the information available to us, and ultimately we'll weigh in. So again, thank you very much. Let's proceed.
Item number three, resolution number two four dash five six one, in the matter of approving purchase orders on announced certificates of payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero seven one nine and memo transfers in batch number MT APR zero seven one nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six one. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash five six two, in the matter of proclaiming July twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four as pretrial probation and parole supervision week in Delaware County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion. Do we have someone speaking? Come on down.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners Lewis, Merrill, and Benton. I'd like to talk a little bit today about-
Induce yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Kara Moore. I'm the chief probation officer at juvenile court. So I wanted to talk a little bit about juvenile court and probation officers. I have the privilege of working with juvenile probation intake and diversion officers at juvenile court. Over the last twenty-five years in this county, I've worked with outstanding adult criminal and juvenile justice professionals. I wish to recognize them in our juvenile court, I want to say cast of characters, it's not, professionals, POs at our court this morning. With me today, we have officers Lindsay Lenhart and Josh Johnson. When let you know someone is placed on community control, they're assigned a probation officer at that time. The work immediately begins to build a relationship with youth and the families we serve. Language is made to services such as counseling, family support, employment, community service, and pro-social activities, to name a few. Probation officers work to improve problem-solving and coping skills, as well as supporting clients to make decisions that will positively impact their lives long-term. Working with our population takes an emotional toll on officers who are exposed to both primary and secondary trauma by being involved in the lives of our clients. This is the type of job that can be left at the office at the end of the day. There are things that cannot be unseen or unheard. We celebrate our clients' successes and we grieve when they fail. We've dedicated officers in Delaware County. Each brings their own background and experiences to the profession. Having a diverse and full staff is vital to our department. It allows enough staff to match the client to the officer for long-term success. Having a full staff keeps caseloads at a reasonable size to ensure all youth and families receive the support of attention they need to change behavior and create peace within the home. We're thankful for the support of the Delaware County Commissioners, our juvenile court judge, David Himanski, and juvenile court administrator Katie Stemmon. Without you, we would not have the resources we need to make a lasting impact on the community we serve here in Delaware County. I would like to close by recognizing the work of our probation intake diversion staff, as well the adult probation staff who do the boozing around work every day to keep Delaware County a safe community. We respectfully request that you proclaim July twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, national probation, parole, and pretrial supervision week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were you the only one to speak here? Were you going to speak as well?
Good morning. I'm Mike Direct. I'm the deputy chief of Delaware County Department of Court Services. To just echo what Chief Moore said, and I wanted to thank the county and the commissioners for taking the time to acknowledge the men and women of the Department of Court Services today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open up to my fellow commissioners for comment. I do have a resolution which I will read. Commissioner Benton?
I'll start off by saying thank you. It's really a nice, you do really important work. You keep us safe. You protect the folks that you supervise and make sure they're getting back to what they should be doing. And so monitoring them is very important. Really appreciate it. I know it's not easy. It's a challenging job, and we're glad to support you. And if we can make this week the week we honor you, I'm glad to do it. So thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Just like to thank you too for your service. I'm on the, I'm very pleased to serve on the Community Corrections Board, and so I'm able to get even more background on the tremendous work that you do and the challenges that you face. I mean, my gosh, it just, it's tough. And I just really admire everyone for their stamina and their dedication. And as Commissioner Benton said, you know, keeping us safe, but also helping those whom you serve and to get a better life and to go on and put past mistakes behind them. And so I thank you so much. I'm so, so honored to honor you today. Thank you.
Yeah, before I read this, just a quick comment. You know, there's a lot of good works that go on in our county. Some are more visible, some get more attention, others quietly do the work behind the scenes. And I really put you in that classification. But you do affect lives. You do make a difference. And I applaud you for what you do and how you do it, and how lucky we are to have you in our county performing these services. So thank you very much. And with that, I am going to read the resolution. Whereas, community corrections is an essential part of the justice system supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community. And whereas, community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be protected from criminal activity. And whereas, community corrections professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders, work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy for community and restorative justice. And whereas, community corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas, community corrections professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim July twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four as pretrial probation and parole supervision week, and encourages all citizens to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Signed by Commissioner Jeff Benton, Commissioner Barb Lewis, and Commissioner Gary Merrill. And I think that says it pretty well. And with that, I'm going to call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
And let's get a photo. Let's proceed.
Item number five, resolution number two four dash five six three, in the matter of approving the child placement services contract, first amendments and second amendments between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and child placement providers.
So moved.
Motion made with Mr. Benton, second with Commissioner Lewis. Discussion.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jennifer Watson-Shea, the business administrator with Job and Family Services. We have two different placement facilities that we are renewing. We have new beginnings, and their price, their placement prices did increase twenty-five percent this year. However, we don't have any youth currently placed there, and we haven't used them in quite a few years. We keep them as a nice safety net placement availability in case we do need them. The other one is New Mercy. We did have two youth placed there within the last year or so. Neither are there currently. There were not any increases with that placement facility. However, they have communicated that they are looking at providing new rates here soon. So this is just the basic contract renewal. We'll eventually have to increase the rate just in case we need that placement facility as well.
Any questions? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six three. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash five six four, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds and a supplemental appropriation for Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Well, these ones are to reimburse, well, the transfer funds is to reimburse our administrative costs based off of our RMS statistics. Our employees select the program that they're working on, and we work on a reimbursement basis. So those funds are paid to us into separate accounts, and we pay all of our administrative costs out of one account. So this is just to reimburse those costs for that. The supplemental appropriations, of course, when we do our budget for the year, we still don't have all of our federal allocations at that point. We hope that they'll be flat funded or increased, but you know, sometimes we receive new funding sources or receive friendly transfers from other counties, and we have received other funds from other counties recently. So we needed to increase our budget so that we can draw down some of that money for us.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash five six five, in the matter of approving purchase radios and related components for use in the countywide public safety communication system.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Good morning, commissioners, Lauren Yankin and Director of 911. The resolution before you this morning is for the approval of the purchase order to purchase one hundred and ten radios for replacement of those radios with Delaware County Sheriff's Office. This is necessary to ensure compliance with the industry P-25 standards, which focuses on interoperability with other agencies, and is for two hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and eighty dollars on state term contracts. It was also a budgeted expense here for two thousand twenty-four.
These are budgetable items and they're basically replacements.
I'm sorry?
These are replacement, basically.
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one thing. Would these have helped at all with what happened last Friday?
No.
Okay.
Are you talking about the Microsoft issue?
Yes.
No, it has nothing to do with any of that.
Okay. Okay. I noticed it. I had heard that some 911s had to go to just radio contact.
We did not have that problem.
Okay, great.
Nope.
Thank you.
It was pretty frustrating. In fact, I had an issue, I'm not going to name the retailer. I had an issue with a retailer over the weekend, and they used Microsoft as an excuse, but the event occurred a week ago. So it's interesting how these things can get used or misused. With that, call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash five six six, in the matter of approving the agreement between the Delaware County Juvenile Court, the Board of Delaware County Commissioners, and the Board of Education of the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio for a truancy officer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Good morning. Karen Watkins, fiscal coordinator for the juvenile and probate court. This is our annual agreement with the ESC for their payment for our truancy officer that operates out of the juvenile court.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six six. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Item number nine is being removed from today's agenda, so that brings us to item number ten, resolution number two four dash five six seven, in the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation and a purchase order increase for domestic violence funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Morning, commissioners. Justin Avi, director of finance. This item has been submitted to accommodate the semi-annual payment to Turning Point, and these proceeds are being collected from a portion of marriage license, divorce, and dissolution fees.
Questions or comments? Vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six seven. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two four dash five six eight, in the matter of approving an additional reduction in the rate of taxation on real property in Delaware County pursuant to RC seven five seven zero five point three one three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Thanks, commissioners. This second item is for a continuation of the property tax reduction for two thousand twenty-four tax year collected in two thousand twenty-five. The savings to property owners next year would be about six point seven million dollars. And if renewed over the three-year period, there would be a total savings of about eighteen million dollars.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Just very, yes, just very happy that we're able to do this, and I think it's important to give our taxpayers some property tax relief whenever we can. And this is exactly what we're doing. This is the third time that we have done this. So thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple thoughts. I think, first of all, it's a tribute to the financial strength that we enjoy as a county, that we're able to do this for the third year in a row. I don't know of any other jurisdiction that is providing this level of property or any tax relief, and especially three years in a row. But it's particularly timely, given the recent revaluations, which were, you know, did spike some, some folks' property taxes. And so we're, I know I'm very happy that we can provide some relief. It's important to note that the county's collection of the property tax bill is a very, very small percent of it. You know, the schools are the largest share, and there's other organizations that collect as well. But ours is a very small percent, but we are, you know, reducing those, the taxes that we collect quite a bit, and we're glad to do that. So again, one last thought, and that is that we have excellent financial planning, that we look out into the future, five, ten years in some cases. And that also enables us to know that we're in good shape for the coming years, which allows us to consider actions like this. So, and Justin leads the charge on that, so I want to thank Justin for his work on that.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's what I got.
I don't want to be redundant, but I do think it's important that we reemphasize this is the third year in a row. We gave this a lot of consideration, probably four years ago, as we debated and evaluated whether this was a good move. We're very proud to do this as a county, and I think Commissioner Benton said it well. We have such a small part on the property tax bill that everybody receives, but within the scope of what we have, this is a pretty high, it's a very high percentage. And it will tell, total over these three years, eighteen million dollars, which Justin mentioned, but I wanted to reemphasize that. The things that we're doing in the county, economic development-wise, and all the other areas, the roads, everything, those are priority number one. But to the degree that we're able to return some of the money to the taxpayers, we consider that very important as well. And I think we're proud, we're pleased, and excited to do this for the third year in a row. And we'll see what the fourth year has for us next year. So thank you. And with that, if anyone has a comment, call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six eight. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Item number twelve is being removed from today's agenda, so that brings us to item number thirteen, resolution number two four dash five six nine, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for the regional sewer district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion.
Good morning, commissioners. Eric McPeek, deputy director of the regional sewer district. This is a budgeted transfer of funds for seven point seven five million from six six two to six 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 account. This is half of our budgeted transfer for the year. We have to increase the PO on one of our projects now. It's a little bit ahead of schedule, and when it came in after we budgeted, it came in a little bit higher than we had originally with the engineer's estimate. But we went forward with the project. We worked with Justin Avi on this, and with him, we're recommending transferring half now, and we'll wait till December to transfer the other half to the account.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Call for vote.
Vote on motion two four dash five six nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thanks, Eric.
That brings us to administrator reports.
Our administrator. Deputy Eric, anything? Commissioner Lewis?
I went to the ODOT Route twenty-three community meeting the other day, and, pardon me, in which, gosh, I think there were eight iterations of, and each, each iteration had multiple ways in which Route twenty-three could be rerouted. And so it was quite detailed. I mean, very good. The work that they have put in this is very expensive. So enjoyed hearing all those explanations and look forward to getting even more facts. And this will be a major change. We'll finally get some relief with the congestion of twenty-three. It won't be yet, though. It's going to take time to do this and implement these changes.
That was the second meeting, which you were there when I got there, and you came as I was leaving. So we all three were there. I thought they just really went to a lot of detail and did a nice job. This particular meeting was at the fairgrounds. And next month, I believe, there's four public meetings.
Right.
And if you have an opportunity to make those meetings, I would encourage you to do so. A lot of time went into this, and there's no easy answers. Every, every solution has upsides and downsides, and, but I believe all of ODOT is doing the best they can to try to come to the best solution possible. Anything else, Commissioner Lewis?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, again, I want to thank ODOT for doing that. And I would encourage the public to go to these sessions. The segments that they lay out, they lay them out by segments and list every stoplight from two seventy all the way to Waldo. And I don't know, there's thirty-some, maybe forty stoplights. So, and each one of them has at least three or four alternatives on how they're going to address that stoplight to reduce stops, you know, between two seventy and Waldo. Some of them are relatively easy, some of them are very complex and very expensive. So it, and they will take time. I think they're looking at ten to fifteen years to finish the entire strip of that US twenty-three. So anyway, I encourage everyone to go to that. Very informative. ODOT is doing a really nice job of trying to engage the public and laying out alternatives and really seeking input. The, just kind of a brief update on the land bank. Been working on that the last week or so. We submitted a number of applications for both brownfield and demolition- for both brownfield and demolition grants that each county is entitled to, and those are being processed by the Department of Development. We are awaiting comments, so we really don't have a whole lot to report, but hopefully we'll get comments back here soon and can get those projects completed. Some of them have already been completed in the earlier rounds, and some of them are in process. Sunny B is probably the one example locally that is done. The renovation is underway. All the demolition work and remediation is completed, and the project, the home has been sold and is in a new owner's hands, and they're working through it. But that's just one example of fifteen to twenty around the county that where the land bank partnering with the Department of Development has implemented some really nice improvements to some problem properties in our county. We've got a retirement party for Tom Homan, Delaware City, yeah, Thursday, Delaware City manager for twenty-five, twenty-six years. Tom, you know, has had a tremendous career in Delaware City, has advanced a lot, you know, in his, with his tenure. The new, met the new city manager, Paul Brake, last week, and very excited to work with him. But again, the reception for Tom is this Thursday at the fairgrounds from five-thirty to eight, so hopefully everybody will be able to make that. And thank Tom for all that he's done to really make Delaware a really beautiful city and a great city. Regional planning is also Thursday night, so there's a conflict there, but we'll see what we can do. The community enhancement grants, the information went out last week on that. The applications are due August eighth, and I would encourage everyone to, you know, if you have a nonprofit and have a project that makes sense that fits into that, I would encourage you to apply. There is a significant amount of money that we fund every year to help our community organizations, nonprofits, advance their missions. And so, again, very, very pleased to see that go forward this year. Lastly, I did want to recognize the EMS group. They got another tremendous award. The Gold Achievement Award by the American Heart Association was given to our EMS system, and that's the eighth year in a row that they've received it, and it just shows that they provide outstanding cardiac care for the residents and visitors in Delaware County. So, I want to recognize them. Jeff Fishel was featured in an NBC Four news article, and so, he did a nice job. So, again, congratulations to our EMS team and thanks for the residents of our community. That's all I got.
And going last, always, some things I don't get to talk about. But EMS, they do a terrific job, and the whole, all the other areas that are serving our county do a great job as well, but we cannot lose sight of the fact that people in this county are well taken care of, and we constantly look for ways to improve that. I know other things are in the works to improve the level of service even more to the benefit of all of our residents. Two things, I went to the Delco Annual Meeting last Thursday night. I hadn't been one in a number of years, and I think they expanded the level of it a couple of years ago on their anniversary, I think it was the fiftieth, I believe. And impressive, I stayed for the annual meeting. The turnout was unbelievable, and the annual meeting went for about two hours, but it was informative, and frankly, I learned a few things I didn't know about what was going on with Delco. And those of you who get their service, you might consider attending next year. The only other thing I have is coming up next week, July thirty through August eighth, is the sales tax holiday that keeps getting expanded by our state government. Now, we are supposed to be reimbursed, and seven-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars was set aside for that purpose. Not all of them are going to Delaware County, I'm like that. But that will be July thirty through August eighth, and as back-to-school approaches, it's an opportunity for residents in our county, as well as the other eighty-seven counties, to save a little money as they prepare to go back to school. I have nothing else, and I don't believe we have any for executive.
We do not.
So, with that, without that, without exception, we-